I have to gavel it.
Hold it.
I like that.
All right, we'll start with roll call.
Mr. Axell?
Here.
Mr. Geis?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
It has been the practice of this body to allow the applicants some decision in how to proceed. Since we have only a minimum quorum present and any decision of this board then would have to be a unanimous decision. It's been the practice to give the applicant the opportunity to say, "I want to wait until there's more people here." You may, so representing the applicant, Mr. Brook, you may choose to proceed with this hearing tonight or you can decide to have this hearing continue until next, it would be next month, it would be October 1st. So I don't have...
Can I interrupt? And I apologize for that, but as I keep the sign resolution, well, that's true for the BZA, which requires that any resolution, the motion of three members must concur. The zoning commission, the resolution only requires a majority.
Okay, then I stand corrected, pleasantly corrected, thank you.
I apologize for that. I just, I want to look at it real quick and as I read that, in 2103, it says a majority of the...
A majority of those present, not a majority of the board. Okay.
Excuse me?
Then forget what I just said.
Yeah, we do have Jeffrey Brown here as our alternate too, guys.
Do you want me to participate or not?
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Do we maybe want to redo roll or formally recognize that he'll be participating?
We can formally recognize that Jeffrey Brown has joined the meeting via the members app from home.
Okay. Okay.
All right, should I read the agenda then?
You can make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Aye, so move.
Wait a second.
Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right. The case up is 816.
All right.
And if we're ready, I go ahead and read the public hearing minutes?
Okay.
The purpose of the hearing is so the commission may review and act on an application from the Ohio University Foundation to reclassify the zoning of the parcel from agricultural, from the agricultural designation to the commercial planned unit development, CPUV designation. The parcel in question is located along the east side of North Alpha Belbrook Road at the intersection of Indian Ripple Road.
I will give the, present the staff report on this application. It's fairly uncomplicated, it's straightforward because this property was the subject of previous action.
Ed, speak up a little louder for me.
Okay.
With the mask on, it's hard to hear.
Well, I can, I'm far enough away from people, I can drop it for the moment.
Thank you.
Before you is a request from Ohio University, specifically the Ohio University Foundation, to rezon a parcel from A1 agricultural to PUDC, which is planned unit development commercial. The parcel is 14.44 acres, located as previously mentioned. It is the most recent acquisition by Ohio University for inclusion in the Russ Research Center LLC project. The Green County parcel ID number is B-3, BO3-1-23-1100. The address is 70 North Alpha Belbrook Road. This parcel was one of three parcels that were the subject of an amendment, case number 801, to the Beaver Creek Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I'll be referring to that as Comp Plan. Passed on January 23rd, 2017, following a positive recommendation from the zoning commission. That date was the date of the trustees meeting. The rationale for the amendment was precisely in anticipation of today's application, that is of the future uses to which Ohio University might want to put this property, should they ever acquire it. In fact, that has happened. The amendment to the Comp Plan involved three properties, this one, the one immediately to the north of the Russ Research Center adjacent, we colloquially refer to it as the Walma Tree Farm, and a seven acre property to the east between the Russ Research Center and Arlington Place. They were identified in the Comp Plan for anticipated residential use, although all three were zoned agricultural, in the Comp Plan they were previously identified for residential uses, and the change that was made was a designation to mixed use. A mixed use designation does not prohibit residential development, it includes residential development, so it didn't take any development rights away from the owners of that property. In fact, it rather expanded those rights and expanded the potential saleability of those properties for future use. So, and then Ohio University has since acquired two of those three properties. The minutes from the zoning commission's public hearing were in your packet, the, along with the trustee resolution approving the amendment to the Comp Plan, so that background is what kind of is informing this current application to a commercial PUD. The planning that has taken place over the subsequent years at Ohio University and in cooperation with the township and other local bodies calls for some development on that corner, and the decision, I'll let the applicant speak in some detail for the decision making as to why PUDC rather than PUD PR as RP, excuse me, as the rest of the Russ Research Center zone, but they are compatible with each other, in the opinion of this zoning staff. We recommend approval. This will be the first of several formal actions that the township can take in support of what we view to be an exciting and long anticipated project. We recommend that the approval be subject to the review and approval of other agencies having jurisdiction, meaning that specific proposals for site planning will be subject to approval by fire department, by the road department, and various county agencies, including the engineer's office, soil and water, sanitary engineering, and utility companies as well. So there's a lot of steps and, excuse me, a lot more hoops that have to be jumped through before any building actually goes on here. What will happen after this hearing, this is an advisory board upon whatever recommendation you may make, which could be to approve, to approve with conditions, or to deny this application. That recommendation will then go to the trustees. The county Department of Planning and Coordinating Commission, the Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission of Green County will then weigh in on relevant topics, and they will coordinate the efforts by which all those agencies then present comments on site planning. So this is not about where the ditch is going to go, this is about, is this an appropriate use of this property? The commercial uses could include, well, I mean, they're defined in the excerpt that I gave you from the Comp Plan, which is highlighted on page 42. Consumer needs, commercial development provides both opportunity and challenges for the township residents, have the opportunity for close convenience shopping with a diverse variety of goods and services, et cetera. Those are, these are quotations from the Comp Plan. Now, I will say that the Comp Plan is intended as a guiding document, it's not legally binding, we're not bound by law to adhere strictly to everything that's printed in the Comp Plan, but it is intended as guidance in making further detailed decisions down the road, such as rezoning and approval of site plans. Our view as a staff is that this application is consistent with what the Comp Plan says, subsequent to that amendment that was made three years ago, and therefore, we recommend approval. So I don't know whether any members of the commission have questions for me based on what I've said so far.
I think so. Will we hear the site plan later?
Not today.
No, like, in the future, it'll come up front of this board?
When a site plan is submitted, it will come before this board, yes. And in fact, the university is hard at work developing a master site plan for the entire parcel. Now, whether we, whether we have a site plan approved that includes all seven of the properties of the parcels that make up the Russ Research Center LLC remains to be seen. There may be some parcel combinations that take place. I will tell you also that with all the activity that's happening at this part of the township, the county engineer and the school board are also involved in fairly large discussions about what's going to be happening at this particular intersection. We view that, our view is that this intersection of Indian Ripple Road and Upper Belbrook is already problematic. There's a housing subdivision of 244 homes going in now. The possibility that a new high school will be built on the opposite corner. And with the expansion of activities on the Ohio University site from, what, 200,000 square feet to possibly in excess of 800,000 square feet, we need to think in advance about the roadways. We have already begun discussions with the county engineer who controls both rights of way. She is working on engaging a consultant to do a thorough fair study of Indian Ripple Road from Factory Road to at least Upper Bell, possibly into the city. We have gotten verbal agreement with the city to cooperate in that study. So there is likely to be, by the time we get to site planning for this parcel, there's likely to be a proposal for a realignment of the intersection that may involve some donation of rights away from the university to, well, in this case, it would be to Green County, in order to make it a safer intersection. So that kind of planning and studying is already, already in the incipient stages and will be part of any further future site planning discussions that we have about it.
Can I put my ear to the ground?
Sorry, I forgot to mention that, that's kind of important. Further questions for me? Okay, I'll turn it over to the applicant then.
All right, can you hear from the applicant now?
Dominic, please speak a little louder. Okay, I've never had a problem speaking, too quietly, but tell me if you're calling him.
Would you be surprised how muffled even he is through talking with the microphone on?
People tell me I've got an accent as well.
Do you? I didn't notice.
And you can go up to the podium now.
I'd like to let people know that I don't have an accent, this is how we speak back in England. You guys have the accents.
We have the accent.
Well, good evening and thank you commissioners for your time this evening. My name is Dominic Brook, Director of Real Estate with Ohio University, representing the Ohio University Foundation this evening on this zoning, rezoning application. So the reason, and a big thank you to Ed and Max for all their support, you know, I've only been with Ohio University for 18 months now, but I know Ed has been working with the research center for a lot longer than that, so we appreciate the partnership we have with the township and look forward to working with you as things move forward. The reason we're here and looking at this rezoning application is we really want to catalyze the development of the research park. It's been there for a long time, we have a lot of older buildings there, it's still, the occupancy rate is still below 50% there, and what we want to do is really move this forward. This parcel, the 14.4 acres that we're talking about this evening, came up for sale just about a year ago today. The foundation purchased it, you know, as part of the larger master plan of the Russ Research Center. The vision for this particular parcel and how it fits into the overall Russ Research Center is really to kind of, as you look at the older buildings, this is to kind of bring, you know, kind of a transition from the research center into research offices and some commercial. What we're hearing, you know, what we're going through, the process is zoning to the commercial. As Ed mentioned, the second step will be the site plan, that's where we get into the specifics, the layout, you know, as we're working with the county on kind of that intersection, how will those access points work? Will there be, you know, or call them pavement spanking, will there be sidewalks and cycle trails for local residents? You know, that will all come as part of the site plan. What we're looking here is just the rezoning to the commercial PUD. In terms of the commercial, in terms of why we're going commercial, we're looking at it kind of those two pieces, the research office piece and the commercial. At the moment, we have a lot of older buildings that, you know, attract a lot of startup, high-tech startup research companies, but it's, you know, very low rent, and what we want to be able to do is attract some higher high-tech research that demand higher office, you know, class A, class B officers rather than class C we have at the moment, to kind of bring that, you know, we have a lot of connections with Wright Patterson here, we are kind of building out that industry cluster in this area. In addition to that, we want to bring in some commercial. What we're hearing from existing tenants and anecdotally from tenants who are looking at the space is there is no place to get food. You know, that, you know, when we have meetings out there, you know, we're phoning Panera, I don't, you know, they're not close. It is very difficult to attract businesses when they can't even get lunch close by. They have to get in their car, drive a considerable way, so we want basically to go down the commercial route to be able to bring that type of opportunity for the local businesses, you know, with the residential going in south of Indian Ripple Road, we think it'll fit well with the residential there, and you know, this area is, you know, each week we're finding new things out, you know, the school may, may not be going there, you know, we feel this is kind of an area of, you know, opportunity for, you know, continue the industrial, continue the research park, but then also kind of service both the research park plus local residents. The reason we're going through the PUD rather than just zoning commercial, it does allow us that flexibility. Commercial alone allows us to do B1, B2, B3, the commercial PUD actually adds in the office space. We want to be able to continue the research park over, and by doing commercial PUD rather than just strict commercial, it brings in those options for office. It also allows us to bring a holistic site plan, rather than going, getting a simple zoning designation and being able to, you know, just follow the regulations, what this allows us to do is build out a comprehensive site plan as we're going, you know, working with the different agencies, looking at different intersection options, you know, coming to you with a plan that shows how that whole area would be used, rather than just bit by bit by bit. You know, we are looking at the access points, how the transportation works, how the connection is with the local areas. So this is, you know, the initial step, just looking to get the rezoning to CPUD, and then, you know, we'll come back, we'll continue to work and partner with the township and the other agencies to come back with a, with a site plan that we feel works well for the area, and go from there. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions or any comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we open the public portion of the hearing right now?
Uh huh.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open up the public portion of the hearing first. We'd like to hear for those that are for the applicant.
And I'll just point out, we have no comments or any other written communication or anything like that.
Okay, okay. Okay. Now we'd like to hear from any that are against the application.
I'm a neutral party, but I'm just wondering how long this, what's the, I'm just not what I'm here for tonight, what's the, what's the outlook as far as if this is approved? How long is this going to take to develop?
So, I mean, my job at the university is to move this forward, but, you know, there are a lot of stakeholders. The site plan is going to take a lot of, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, you know, my job is to shepherd it through, but we want to get this right.
I have had some interaction with Mr. Cox.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Out there. I own a business and talked to him a few times, so I'm excited.
We need you to identify yourself.
Oh, okay, all right.
We need you to...
All right, well, actually, can we hear from those that are neither for or against?
There you go.
Give it to a neutral party.
I'm a neutral party.
Okay, people would like to hear from you.
My name is Stephen Sally, I live here in Beaver Creek at 3166 Worcester Drive, but I'm just curious about that project, that's not what I'm here for tonight, but anyway, just wanted to know what the outlook was as far as moving ahead and completion.
I'm hoping, you know, part of it is we need to know what's happening with the school and that intersection, so we're doing a traffic study, once we get the results of the traffic study, we know kind of how that intersection's going to look. I mean, I'm hopeful, you know, maybe something in 2021 we can...
Wow, that'd be awesome.
Or at least get the site plan submitted and approved in 2021.
Okay, great, look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing, and then we can open up for discussion amongst the board at this time.
Thank you, Scott.
What's up?
Hi, Dominic.
Yeah?
I reviewed all of them.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Aye. No, I'm good. I think we're on the right track.
All right. You guys ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think so.
Okay. Call for a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application case number 816, as requested by the applicant.
I will second that motion.
We're approving the application as submitted.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Ready for the vote?
Yes.
Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
The anticipation, you're like, what would he say?
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Dominic, congratulations. Once we get a resolution signed, we'll get a copy of that to you so you can fit it to your board, and of course, as you're moving forward across the country, you can tell us, I think we're going to have to move next week.
Yeah.
Well, feel free to stick around if you like, I know you have a long time, so if there's anything else going on.
Ready to move on to 817?
Yeah, we're ready for case number 817.
The purpose of the hearing is so the commission may review and act on the motion to initiate a zoning map amendment for several parcels in the township. The parcels will have the highway business overlay, HBO, district classification, applied as an overlay district. Overlay districts do not change the underlying base zoning of a parcel, instead being applied in addition to the underlying zoning. Specific information about the HBO zoning classification can be found in Article 9 of the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution.
All right, we're ready for the staff report?
Thank you. So before you is a request?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I need to read that.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, Max McConnell, I'm the Associate Economic and Zoning Administrator, and before you is a request from the Beaver Creek Township Community Development and Risk Department to apply the highway business overlay district zoning classification to a number of parcels within the township. The list of parcels requested for this map amendment is outlined in Exhibit A, which is attached to your packet. So, as you all know, the HBO language has come through the zoning commission in the past for your recommendation. The trustees, the township trustees passed a resolution creating the district formally on July 13th, 2020, and now, after 30 days, it is official and it is ready to be applied to parcels within the township. As we discussed during the zoning commission hearing for the HBO language, the township believes that the HBO zoning will have a number of benefits to the community. We expect that the combination of some eased requirements in terms of development standards, along with stricter requirements for, for site planning in the area, will foster both economic development while also allowing that growth to be sustainable. The township trustees were asked to provide input on the parcels that we have proposed in Exhibit A. We also took some input from the township administrator. We also called for, we had actually two rounds, where we called out to folks within 500 feet of the proposed district and asked if they requested their input. And the Community Development Risk Office has not received any statements suggesting that the rezoning is not supported by the public. We have had several residents and property owners request more information, either via email or phone call, but once they were given the information, none have followed up with additional questions or concerns. Staff recommends the approval of the submission before you, the map amendment submission. Regional Planning Commission has previously commented that the zoning district, they feel is a great addition to the options that we have available for township zoning. Staff has consulted... Staff has consulted with the trustees and solicited public input and now believes that this particular configuration, and again, you'll see on your map that was included with the packet, kind of a visualization of what parcels are, we are suggesting be included. We think that they represent the best selection for application of the HBO district within the township. If the zoning commission decides, or recommends rather, to pass this along to the trustees, then what will happen is staff will submit this parcel, or this plan to the Regional Planning Commission. They will do an executive review, followed by a full committee review. At that point, the trustees will conduct a public hearing to consider the rezoning, although that will typically be scheduled at next, at the next meeting, which is September 14th. So we expect to ask them for a consideration date, pass it along to Regional Planning. Once we get their final comments, then we bring it back to the trustees. If they pass it, it will be applied. Do you have any questions for me about the application?
Well, Max, you had said that.
Sorry, Jeffrey, go ahead.
Yeah, just a very quick question. So I'm looking at the application here. I assume this is the same proposal that we looked at before in terms of what the objectives were. And I assume that the last three pages here, the actual handouts in the article?
I'm sorry, the last three?
Last three pages of the description are the landowners'.
Correct, those are the address labels that we sent out when we did our 500-foot boundary for communicating.
So my question is, did you receive any negative responses from any homeowners? And if so, were they reconciled?
We received no negative responses. Like I said, we received a few requests for additional information from the Phillips Mining Company. One of the properties that bordered the proposed region. But once he realized he was not being considered for actual rezoning, he was copacetic with everything. But we have not received any comments or indication that there is a negative feeling about this for any of the property owners. As you can see, or well, you can't, sorry, maybe, but there don't appear to be, you know, a large contingent of folks here to present their views. So staff does not feel that there is any kind of significant opposition to this within the community.
I think he absolutely just asked exactly what I was going to ask. I mean, there was no pushback from the actual property owners when you said you had contacted the 500-foot radius and had some questions. But the actual property owners.
Are included as well in that. So the 500-foot radius is the, it encompasses inside and then 500 feet outside of that, of those lines that you see. So they were also, yeah.
So once this is approved, you may move forward with additional new zoning classifications in conjunction with this, or?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I understand your question.
Once this is approved, then I remember us talking about like the Ankeny Soccer Complex.
Sure.
That would be after this would be approved.
Correct.
We would move forward with those specific new zoning classifications?
That is my plan to, once we have this in, in effect, to begin bringing you some additional new zoning, like we talked about some recreational zoning, a mining zoning classification. And in fact, I think you guys already considered the airport district zoning classification, so we'll be moving along with that. The overlay district is, like I said, kind of placed on top of those. So applying it now will not affect the ability to rezone those parcels later.
Any other questions?
No questions.
So we heard the staff report. Do we need to hear from the applicant?
So the applicant is also me? I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I don't know about that.
And then if you have none, I will go ahead and cede and.
Okay. All right, at this point, we'll open up the public portion of the hearing. First, we would want to hear from any of those folks in attendance that are for the application. Okay. No one came forward, so let's move forward and hear from anybody that is against the application.
Again, my name is Stephen Sally. I'm real, again, I might be neutral in this because I didn't, I got this information from Max the other day. And I didn't, this is, you know, first notification that I know of that I received pertaining to this overlay. And I'll be honest with you, in other areas of Ohio that I own property, my experience with overlays is, it's not that great. To me, it adds another level of red tape to an applicant who wants to maybe develop a property. Sometimes it can inhibit growth. But a lot of this doesn't pertain to me. And in fact, I didn't think any of it pertained to me until I started reading it down through, down through there the other day, which you advised me to do. And in parcel 9.9, and 9.9, it talks about development adjacent to the Creekside Trail Bike Path, which I own property on the north side of that bike path. And I'm not sure why the bike path is included in a highway overlay.
So the actual bike path itself is not included in the district and nor are any parcels north of the bike path?
Well, that's not what it says here. It says, "Any parcel within the HBO and which adjoins or abuts the Creekside Trail Bike Path shall also be subject to the following development requirements." It doesn't say on the north side in there.
Yes, as you look at the map provided, you'll see that the line that indicates the parcels that we're looking to include stops below, so south of the Creekside Trail Bike Path.
I know what your picture says, but I'm going by words. So I think that maybe if that is the case, then you should indicate that any property south of the Creekside Trail Bike Path would be included in this overlay. At that point, I would have no objection because it wouldn't involve me.
Well, it's written in the language from the HBO district that we talked about. It talks about, I think it's in Appendix A, it says the proposed boundary district. And it talks about where it follows. The boundary follows the graphic border of the township on both the west and east side of the district. To the north, the boundary lines follows the Creekside Trail Bike Path. So it's, it's written in the actual, the HBO language of what the boundary is.
I don't have that.
So that's why when they talk about the overlay.
So, okay, let me try and, so what we're proposing to do today is to take a certain list of parcels, which is provided here.
Right.
And those would be applied with the HBO zone.
My parcel is in here.
Okay, BO3, do you mind if I bring it up here?
I don't mind at all.
That's what I was wondering, where, I didn't even know where you.
It's at, it's the property that adjoins the old Township Hall, right beside the old Township Hall, that goes from Dayton Zini back to the bike path. If it wasn't on here, then I probably wouldn't have got a letter, right?
Well, if it was within 500 feet of the boundary, you would also have gotten a letter.
Just hear where it goes on around.
Right, we're statutorily required whenever we're considering.
Okay, that's why, I wonder why I didn't get a notice before this if there was one sent out, because this is the only information I've received.
So we sent out a, several months back now, we sent out a letter to the parcels that we were considering, which has changed.
Maybe at that point, you weren't considering my parcel.
That's correct. So I want to be clear that the list of parcels that is before you now has gone through some iterations with the suggestions of the trustees and our township administrator and Regional Planning.
Okay.
So what was the parcel number again?
Well, it's the last four, not 2900, if you know the rest of them. Not at all, it's the one with the check mark right there.
Okay, so this is one of your parcels?
No, it isn't. Is it outlined in red?
Yes, this parcel here.
No, mine is north, unless I looked at the GIS map.
Which parcel can you point out on the map?
Yes, sir.
Here's the, where do we find Creekside Trail, which is.
Yeah, right there, you're on it, right there. Right there, yes.
These are not currently being proposed for rezoning. Nothing north of the Creekside Trail Bike Path is currently being proposed for rezoning.
Okay, so by any chance, do you have my parcel number there, just so I can satisfy my own mind? Yes.
So we have that listed as B03000200350012900.
12900, and what do I have?
This one is 02900.
All right, then I have no objection.
You're all ready to hear all sorts of great stuff.
All right, thanks a lot for clearing it up. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming and please, if you have any other considerations or concerns, now's the time.
Okay, well, it, it won't affect me, but like I said, from a developer's standpoint, I hope the township is considerate and, and doesn't add an extra level. If someone wanted to develop over there, would they have to get approval through the overlay first and then come back for another approval?
So they would, they would go through the same specific site planning process as one would do if they were applying for, for instance, what OU is doing.
Okay.
And within a PUD.
Okay.
That is an additional layer. Right now, if they were by rights, like say they were in I-1, and they wanted to do a use that was permitted by right in I-1, they would not have to go through the specific site planning process. And correct me if I'm wrong here. They would just be able to apply for a zoning permit, apply for building permits and get to work.
Okay.
Within a PUD, there is a process that goes through this commission called a specific site plan, where they present, here's what we, here's where we want to lay out the buildings. The zoning commission can apply conditions to that if they would like. And it also requires the approval of agencies like Green County Soil and Water, the Green County Engineer, Sanitary Engineering and other agencies to make sure that drainage requirements are met, things like that.
Whereas before, it wouldn't be required.
If it was a by rights use, correct. What we've done is say, we've noticed a couple of things, which is there are significant drainage challenges in this area. So we thought an additional level of having the county engineer, sanitaryian, some of these others, sign off on a site plans along this main thoroughfare was important for the sustainable development, to make sure, even though we want to cater to developers, we don't want to do so at the detriment of other residents and township with drainage issues and some other things.
Well, I understand that. But like I said, some other areas where I own some property and, in fact, it has stagnated the growth in a particular area, which was a great area, but just the level of red tape has, has driven developers away. And the property has sat vacant for years, whereas it could have really been a vibrant part of, of the community. So anyway, thanks for your help, Max.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we want to hear from those that are neither for nor against, or any general comments. Nobody's double duty tonight. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the commission members. Any discussion, guys?
Ange is texting. I don't have anything to add.
No?
I'm, I'm good.
A lot of good work gone into this. I'd like to call for a motion on the application.
I'll move that we accept the case number 817 as submitted by the applicant, Beaver Creek Township.
I'd like to second that motion.
Ready for the vote?
Yes.
Mr. Axel?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All righty.
Appreciate it, commissioners.
I guess at this time, Lori, do we have any minutes to?
I was trying to get them done. I, again, I told Max that I was working on them and I was out one day this, I was out. I was with them, Matt. I was really having a hard time here. So it's taken me a little while, so no, I don't have anything for you this time. I will next time.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'm terrible for you.
Okay, is there any other business that we need to discuss before we adjourn?
One thing that I would like to discuss for the good of the group, I was able to attend the Beaver Creek Cities Planning Commission meeting last night. First of all, I'd just like to say, I really appreciate you all. After having visited them. But I was able to speak to their chair, Mike, and his last name is escaping me. But he suggested some maybe collaboration between our groups. Apparently, that group and the Fairborn Planning Group used to get together and do kind of a tour of their shared boundary. They would discuss ongoing projects, you know, interesting anecdotes. So I was hoping to gauge the interest of this commission in a similar kind of venture where we would, you know, maybe rent a small bus, travel along the border between the township and the city. And again, just kind of discuss shared issues, shared challenges, opportunities, those kind of things. I see quite a lot of value potential there. So I would like to see what your thoughts are on, on an arrangement like that.
As long as it's the party bus? I'm down with that, yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Sign me up. No, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I mean, it's always great to see what's going on in other areas and communities, so I'm all for it.
If the board is, is agreeable, then I will begin kind of conversations and try to set that up in the next couple of months. Or, you know, seeing of course how things go with the pandemic. I don't know that it's necessarily the best idea to gather a bunch of people in a small bus right now. However, as, as we get the chance, it's good to know that you guys are supportive and that maybe it's something that we can.
Max?
Yeah.
His name was Mike Self. And if I'm not mistaken, he had mentioned something about that interaction happening.
Happening what now, Randy?
Years ago, that, many years ago, the two zonings, the Planning Commission, zoning commission got, kind of got together.
All right, yeah, so thanks, Randy. So, yeah, apparently it even has some, some precedent with our own group. So having met Mike, I think he'll have a lot to add to any of our discussions. So if we've got something coming up and, you know, want somebody who's been doing this a long time just to weigh in, I, I think that's also something that's worth while as well. Okay, I will play that by ear and see what we can make happen.
That sounds good. All right, anything else while we're here? No? Do I call for a motion to adjourn?
You can call for a motion to adjourn, yeah.
Okay.
Well, some move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay.